Good morning. Welcome to the April 27, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. We are opening to closed session. Madam Clerk.
For today's session or last week?
Yeah, let's report out and then thank you.
Closed session items from the April 20, 2021 meeting. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, reexisting litigation, Michael Scott Taylor et al. versus County of Calaveras, United States District Court, case number 118CV00760DADBAM. Board action, no reportable action. Item two, conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action, no reportable action. Item three, conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action, no reportable action. Item four, conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action, no reportable action. Closed session items for today, April 27, 2021. Item one, public employment pursuant to government code 54657B1. Titles: County Administrative Officer, Planning Director. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, reanticipation of litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
At this point, we'll open to public comment on either or both of these items.
We have no public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn into closed session.
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome back to the April 27, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. At this time, we don't have anything to report out on closed session, and we'll be continuing closed session at the end of the day on item two. At this time, I would like to do a pledge allegiance. Madam Clerk, would you like to lead us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, my mask sucked in my mouth through partway through that. We'll move on to staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Yes, we have Lisa Medina.
Oh, good.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, respective board members, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. This coming Saturday, we have another free rabies and microchip clinic for our Calaveras community. At our last clinic, we vaccinated over 100 animals and microchipped 66. Those 66 fur babies will have a better chance of finding their way home to their humans if they get lost. So, if your fur baby is due for their rabies vaccine or needs to be microchipped, please come by and see us at the Government Center this coming Saturday from 9 o'clock to noon. Dr. Judy Rengat and our partners with Focus will be there to say hello and thank you for keeping our fur babies and our humans safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any further staff comments?
None at this time.
With that, we'll move on to the public health update. Public Health Services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the Board and County residents. Sam Leach, I'm your Interim Services Director. Is the audio working okay?
Your microphone's cutting in and out a little bit, Mr. Leach.
Okay. I'm gonna have to... Sorry, but the connection is not sustaining.
Do we lose him completely, or is he just checking his connections?
I think he's checking his connection. He was moving around.
Love the picture of the poppies. They're already past glooming pretty much at this time.
That was a mess.
Yeah. I was hoping the rain this weekend would help.
It was not that bad. It wasn't raining. The forecast was almost two inches. I don't think we got too much.
Just an announcement to the public. We are open to the public to coming in. It's posted on the agenda, in case you haven't read it yet, at the header. But at this time, the Board of Supervisors is accepting the public in for comment and viewing of the board session with 50% protocol, I believe, and spacing, and please be respectful of wearing a face mask when you come into the boardroom. Thank you. And thank you for the suggestion, Ms. Callaway. I appreciate it. It's a good one.
Mr. Leach is trying. I'm going to move to another line.
What do you think?
A little more about the weather, though.
I wonder if you go on to general public comment and then come back to the...
You know, that's not a bad suggestion. We're gonna go ahead and go to general public comment at this time, and then we'll come back to the public health update once Mr. Leach gets his situation situated.
Chair Stoppa, can you hear me now?
I can hear you clearly, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on with the public health update.
Yeah, I was waiting to be let in. Sorry for that. The connection has been pretty rough over here at Colombo for a few days.
Okay.
But everything's coming through clear, and I can provide the public health update now?
Yeah, you're more than clear.
Okay, perfect. So, thank you for having me these past few months as the Interim Health and Human Services Director. I just want to take a few minutes to give this last public health update from yours truly. Getting into the data, we have completed 39,670 COVID tests since the start of the pandemic. We've had 2,075 COVID positive cases. We have 13 active cases as of now. We've had 2,010 recovered and zero current hospitalizations. We are at 52 fatalities, and doses administered to Calaveras residents currently stand at 28,524. Now, this week, we are running mostly second-dose clinics, catching up from some larger first-dose clinics that we had done several weeks ago. So, this week, we're actually doing Frogtown today, tomorrow, and Thursday, but the bulk of that is second-dose vaccines. So, those of you that are still looking for a place to get a vaccine, please turn to myturn.ca.gov. So, all of our Calaveras County clinics, including the Saturday option at Mark Twain and any other options outside of the federally run pharmacy programs, are going to be found on myturn.ca.gov. That includes our clinics, Mark Twain's clinics, and any other future clinics that get established through the county. Everyone 16 and over is eligible. We are, let's see, testing, there's pre-testing today at Ironstone from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, if you're still looking for a place to get COVID testing, your option is to go today at Ironstone. There are also several pharmacy options in the area. There's always the Optum Serve site up in Sonora, as well as a public option out in Jackson. We remain in the orange tier, in the blueprint for a safer economy. We moved to that tier on April 20 and continue to hold steady there. So, I believe this is my last public health update pending today's appointment of the new permanent director, and I just want to say that I appreciate you guys putting up with me the past few months and for the public support, the other department head's support, and for the board's support in partnering with us through this very complex and difficult time. So, with that, happy to take questions on anything COVID pandemic-related for public health.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Sam, for stepping in the way you did. I know it was a hurricane when you stepped in and what's transpired since then. You've done a great job, you and your staff both. You handled yourself very well, so I just want to say thank you for stepping up.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ms. Callaway?
Yes. Mr. Leach, thank you. You were even available on weekends, which I didn't expect, but yeah, I agree with Supervisor Toffenelli. You came in in the thick of it, and now we're trying to wind down, and we are where we are because of the work that you've done, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
I also want to thank you, Mr. Leach. You've not just been available on the weekends, anytime you receive a message, you promptly return a call, even when it's... I've let you know, you don't have to answer until tomorrow. You know, you've been a cornerstone to keeping the situation going the way it has, and just words aren't enough, and we're more than happy to retain you in your original position, and well deserved, sir. Words can't say thank you enough.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I really appreciate all of your guys' support. I know I said that already, but I also appreciate, you know, going back to probation, my home, where I belong, and with my team over here, and look forward to continuing to serve Calaveras County. I have no plans to go anywhere. And also, with partnering with Ms. Allen, you know, once she's appointed in the fight against COVID, like, we're not going anywhere there either. Probation is still helping, you know, work security at the clinics, and, you know, anything we can do to pitch in and make sure that we, you know, transition this right and that nobody feels like they got left hanging or that we missed a step. I don't think that's the case. We're rounding the corner, and it's time to start moving past this and reimagining Calaveras County, you know, post-COVID even better than we were before. So, thank you all.
Any further board comment? Oh, Ms. Callaway?
Mr. Leach, you did ask for COVID comments. In your discussions with the state, do you have any inkling of where we might be going in terms of the tier system come June or sooner? Thank you.
Well, the state has made it fairly clear that they plan on scrapping the tier system June 15. Of course, there's some caveats in there, but it sounds like June 15 is kind of our date to, you know, I have Colleen Rodriguez's voice in my head telling me, yeah, no, COVID is not going to be over June 15, but we will be transitioning out of the blueprint for a safer economy, according to the state, at that time. Now, what will be, what will remain after that? The devil's in the details. We'll see what remains. You know, they've been pretty clear that they're still going to expect masks for indoor gatherings for a while, and we'll see if they learn more about the variants. I'm sure our county health officer will work with our new director and keep us apprised of that, but it'll be an ever-evolving situation and, you know, balance between science and politics and, you know, public will. So, it'll be interesting, but I believe that our current blueprint and structure will go away June 15. It's been pretty clearly communicated.
Mr. Leach, what about the health order? Do you think that will be lifted or remain in place?
I don't have any information to share on the health order. I think we've asked Colleen, if you want to weigh in on that, you're welcome to. I don't have any specific information. I haven't heard anything on that being lifted yet.
Hi, it's Colleen Rodriguez, Deputy Director of Public Health. Yes, Sam, we've asked the state repeatedly what the status of the health order will be, and they have dodged the question, so we don't have any information at this time.
Thank you, Colleen. And Supervisor Callaway, you know, to be clear, over the last week, week and a half, as you could imagine, I've gotten short timers, and Colleen has been continuing to stick to a pretty rigorous schedule of calls, and, you know, we get texts from CDPH on a Saturday morning saying there's a call in three hours, and it's a lot to keep up with, so I'd be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge the amazing work that Colleen has done and that she's still in this fight, you know, she hasn't really got a break, her team doesn't get a break. So, we've been working as things have gotten a little less chaotic, but I personally haven't kept up with the normal rotation of seven days a week calls from the state and announcements on short notice. It's a ton to keep up with over time, and Colleen deserves some recognition for continuing to be in that fight.
Agreed, Mr. Leach. Thank you very much, Colleen. You're not forgotten, and you'll still be there in the future, so, you know, working on a year and a quarter right now of just COVID, and not to mention the service prior to that. Any further board comments? Questions? I'll open it to public comment.
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay. Any final questions or statements? Thank you, Mr. Leach. We appreciate your time. Says he's talking, but he's not talking, so...
Yeah, sorry. You know, I think we forgot about Doug Archer. I don't know, it's probably too late for that. Maybe he already called for public comment, but totally sorry. That's what happened when my video went out, and I totally spaced out on my partner there. Is Doug on the call? Is there anything you wanted to add?
Anything you want to add, Mr. Archer?
You know, I don't have too much to add, other than Saturday, we only did about 250 doses in our clinic, not because we didn't have space. So, you know, if we can just continue pushing it out there and letting people know we're available on Saturdays for vaccines, they can use the MyTurn platform to get scheduled. That would be good. And I would echo all of the same comments about Sam. Sam, it was a pleasure working side by side with you. I know you aren't going anywhere. I don't usually get too involved in probation stuff, so, but I appreciate the partnership and looking forward to a continued partnership with the county.
Well, thanks for all your support, Doug, and sorry if I spaced out on you.
That's okay. I just got back from vacation, so I'm catching up on anything, everything anyway, so...
I just have one question. With the amount of people coming in, are we still looking at walk-ins at this time for either Frogtown or Mark Twain?
We are... I'll have to check on the exact process with our clinic director, but yeah, we, I mean, we still, we have capacity. Advertising for walk-ins gets a little challenging up until the last moment because, you know, if we don't have enough walk-in space, so, I mean, I would think by Friday afternoon for a Saturday clinic, we would know if we can, how many walk-ins we can accommodate.
Makes sense, makes sense. And just stay on the right side of that probation thing, Mr. Archer.
Yeah, we don't need to see him here, Doug. We will take walk-ins at the majority of our clinics. You know, one thing, though, is, actually, a couple things. One, you know, you don't know what you're going to get. Like, you might be walking in, and we're going to have one specific type of vaccine for that walk-in appointment, whereas, you know, you can go online and, you know, do what you want to do. The other thing is, you know, we encourage people, if we've got a clinic that you know is open from 9 to 4, we don't really need walk-ins, you know, showing up at 3:59. You know, we've got to get these vials, so we try to not waste doses, and so, you know, it's important to make sure that they run to account that is, you know, consistent with the number of doses that we get out of each vial. So, Colleen, did I miss anything there? You want to clarify anything?
No, I think you got it. The one thing I did just want to alert the public to is that both the federal government and the state government have cleared Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and so, just as a reminder, that is the one-dose vaccine that is available. And we will be doing one-dose vaccines today, actually, today, tomorrow, and Thursday at Frogtown. So, if people are interested in that, we did put it onto MyTurn, but you can also walk in to get those for the next three days as well. So, just wanted to clarify that part. Thanks.
Well, I know where I'm going very much. But if there's nothing further, we'll move on? Thank you. We'll move on to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. And another reminder that we are open to the public, if you did not hear this, you weren't on earlier, to the public being present at the board chambers with 50% capacity, spacing, and please be respectful of the masks.
We do not have public comment at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Any board members that would like to pull an item? Any staff that would like to pull an item? Public?
I do not see anyone.
Very good. With that, I'll entertain a motion on the remainder or entirety of the consent agenda.
I move the consent, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. A motion by Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second? Your lights on, Ms. Callaway. Thank you for your second, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 of the board. With that, we'll... Let's see, we're still really good on time. So, we'll move on to, we're going to go ahead and move item 16 to the front of the regular agenda for Public Health Services. So, are we ready to go, Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, sorry about that. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director, and I am happy to bring before you today a resolution appointing Cory Allen to our Health and Human Services Agency Director. And we do have Ms. Allen with us today, and so she has the opportunity to address the Cory, you're muted.
This is a classic. I'm also cut off slightly. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Did you want to speak first, or shall I say some words?
I will give you the floor.
Thank you. I am thrilled to be here today. I am hoping that we can really step into this new time that we're in with courage. And just being here today, meeting with the staff, I can see that this team is ready. So, I thank you for inviting me to be here today. We have work to do, and I want to thank Sam Leach for the incredible work that he has done in the past four and a half months. He is absolutely the superstar that has helped take this agency moving forward. Let's not forget, we are in a worldwide pandemic, but that pandemic is very local here in Calaveras County, and our team here is poised, they're ready, and we're ready to adapt and make whatever changes we need to do to really reach in and lean in and work towards wellness and health in this community. So, with that, I just want to say thank you for inviting me here today.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Ms. Callaway?
Ms. Allen, I was at a CSAC conference last week, and I made sure to thank the Tuolumne Supervisors at the conference for your being over here and other things.
I just want to say welcome and thank you for joining Calaveras County. Look forward to working with you.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, I just want to say, Ms. Allen, welcome to the staff.
I'm excited. I know that we have a lot of work to do. As I've said, we are all in, on board. The team has been incredibly supportive. I've had you as a board, and I appreciate hearing your kind words, so let's get to it.
Any public comment?
This is Sam. I just want to welcome Cory in publicly and say congratulations on your appointment, and you've got a great team there, a great team of managers, and also just a lot of people at every layer of the organization that want to serve our public and are depending on you to do good things. So, best wishes to you. I look forward to being a partner here at the county, and we're all rooting for you. So, best wishes.
Thank you, Chief.
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to thank you for crossing the line, coming over here to Calaveras County. Look forward to working with you. A lot of good prospects moving forward in Calaveras County, and it's, you know, so, bright and sunny future, hopefully, you know? Hopefully, we see a little light at the end of the tunnel through everything we had to go through across the world and the state. And with that, if there's no further public, or, I'm sorry, board comments, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. So move. Thank you, Mr. Guerimendi.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Is there anything else you would like to say, Cory, before we make a vote?
I do. Just thank you so much to this team. They have been incredibly welcoming. I do know that we are going to adapt. We're going to lean in and be very responsive to the community's need moving forward. These past four to twelve to fifteen months feels like it's been a lifetime, and none of us have had an experience in our lifetimes as what we're seeing right now with this pandemic. So, that said, there are other impacts of a pandemic that the Health and Human Services Agency is engaged in, and we will continue to stay engaged in that work. You're going to see a lot of change in a, in a way that's going to really reach into your community. But everything's going to happen in concert with our partners, with this team here, and with your board. So, thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Cory. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Five-oh vote of the board. Thank you. You have a wonderful day. With that, we will be going back to item fourteen. Oh, we did go to sixteen. We just did it. Oh, fifteen. My apologies. Sixteen. Item sixteen. All right. Public Health Services. Authorize the board chair to sign an agreement where Renee Ramirez, M.D., to serve as a Calaveras County Health Officer for the period of April twenty-seventh, 2021, through June thirtieth, 2022, for the not-to-exceed amount of $194,133.38, and adopt a resolution appointing Renee Ramirez, M.D. as the Calaveras County Health Officer effective April twenty-seventh, 2021, through June thirtieth, 2022, in line with the aforementioned agreement, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to enter into amendments to the agreement so long as it does not modify the not-to-exceed value of the agreement. That was a mouthful.
Well, thank you, Chair Stoppa. This is Sam Leach. I realize that as of a couple of minutes ago, I'm no longer the interim HHS Director, but that said, I don't, I don't think Ms. Allen needs to be put on the spot for this. So, so here I am, and I know we have Dr. Renee Ramirez on, on the line and available to talk today. But I first just, you know, before we get further into this, I just want to take a brief moment. Lots of thank yous today. But Dr. Paul Beatty has been our interim county health officer for the duration of the time that I've been there. And obviously, he stepped in with, with the departure of our long-term county health officer, Dr. Dean Colletta. And those were big shoes to fill, and Dr. Beatty really stepped up and, and has helped us and just been genuinely just a very kind and gracious man and very, very helpful in our, our fight against COVID. He's, he's truly been in this with, with his heart, just wanting to serve our community. That said, you know, he has, he has other pursuits, and the, the permanent position needs to be filled, and, and we need stability, and frankly, some, some vision, long-term. And, and I believe we've found a really great one here in, in Dr. Ramirez. So, not that I'm qualified to bring forward a doctor, but, but the, the RFP was out there for quite some time, and, and we've been fortunate to, to recruit Dr. Ramirez. So, if, if it's the board's will, I would like to give Dr. Ramirez a few moments here to introduce himself and, and give you guys a chance to see what we see in him.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Leach.
Dr. Ramirez?
Good morning.
You are?
My on? Can you guys see me?
We, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay. Well, good morning. My name's Renee Ramirez. Grew up in Kerman, California. Small town just west of Fresno. From there, I actually grew up about another fifteen, twenty minutes west of there. Grew up where my nearest neighbor was about ten away. And then went to Fresno State. From Fresno State, my wife and I moved to Philadelphia for medical school, and then we returned home, where we started raising family. We now have four kids, two boys, two, ranging from one-year-old to twelve-years-old. And we're involved in various community organizations here in Fresno. And I heard about this opportunity up in Calaveras County, which was interesting, because my family and I enjoy going up for the frog festivals and going camping in the, in the big trees up there. And I thought that this might be a, a nice next chapter for me.
Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Fulendorf?
Welcome to Calaveras County.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with a question. So, you, you are currently still, still residing in Fresno County?
I'm residing in Fresno County, correct.
Excellent. How, how, how often do you come up and visit us?
Often. They need me to come up and visit. I was finally up later today. I was asked to come in to swear in.
Excellent, excellent. I would be, I look forward to meeting you then.
Sounds good.
Mr. Guerimendi?
I was going to agree with you, Chair Stoppa. If you're in town and we're still in meetings, stop on and say hi.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it. Any, any other comments or questions from the board? Public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. If there's no further questions or, or, um, if there's no further questions by the board, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fulendorf. Is there anything else you would like to say, Doctor, prior to us voting?
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity and enjoy, looking forward to working with you and learning a little bit more about each and every one of you.
Thank, thank you very much. We look forward to meeting you and working with you also. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes on a five-oh vote of the board. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll be back to item fourteen post a ten-minute break. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll be moving to item fourteen, Economic and Community Development. Approve the Calaveras County Parks and Recreation Commission's recommended project to receive Proposition sixty-eight per capita grant funding.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Galino. Yes, we can.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa and Honorable Board of Supervisors and Calaveras County citizens. Kathy Galino here from the Calaveras County Economic and Community Development Department. So, today before you, you have our 2021 Parks and Recreation Commission recommendations for projects regarding the Prop sixty-eight allocation funding for Calaveras County. So, I'd like to give a little bit of background on this. Our Parks and Rec Commission is a seven-person body. They are appointed by the Board of Supervisors, and I will give each one by name. So, the representative for Supervisory District One is Alexandra James. For Supervisor District Two, it's Sarell McDaniel. For Supervisor District Three, it's Casey Jardine. For Supervisory District Four, it's Ed Nyman. And then, we also have Cory Fisk, who is representing Supervisory District Five, and I believe that she is in the audience today. And then we also have representatives from the San Andreas Rec and Parks District, which is Matt Brock. And last but not least, from CCWD, we have Representative Les Thomas. So, the Parks and Rec Commission is a group of people from various communities and parts of our county that provide input and advice and come up with decisions for projects, ideas, and for improving parks and recreation throughout our county. Over the course of the last few months, we have been meeting to discuss the county's allocation of Prop sixty-eight funding for parks and recreation services in our county. Now, this is an allocation that comes from the state to the county of Calaveras for public projects. During the March twenty-second, 2021 commission meeting, the commissioners voted to move forward three projects, recommend three projects to the board. The first project being the Railroad Flat Community Center. This is a project that would be managed under the Blue Mountain Community Renewal Council and would encompass the former railroad flat school that was closed. It has a gym, a youth soccer field, there's baseball fields. And the funding request on this would be to purchase the property from Calaveras Unified School District and upgrade these facilities, making them a community facility for that area in railroad. This area serves a severely disadvantaged community, which is also important to note, and the request for this was $300,000. The allocation again to the county of Calaveras Incorporated is $400,000, and that's a straight allocation. The second project that the commissioners voted and wanted to recommend to the board is the San Andreas Recreation and Parks District for maintaining their, and replacing their fencing at the Alex Quinones Fields. That's right across Mountain Ranch Road from our government center, if you haven't been there. It's a forty-year-old old ballfield fence. It's going around the Little League and the adult softball fields, and they were looking to replace those. Their request is a $70,000 request. And again, this is in a severely disadvantaged community. The third project is Feeny Park in Murfrees, California. The Feeny Park Foundation manages the properties that are owned by the Vallesito Union School District. And what they are looking to do with their project request is to upgrade and make the bathrooms, the public bathrooms ADA, modernized. They also were hoping to have some funding to do snack shack and refurbish the skate park. This project is not located in a disadvantaged, severely disadvantaged community. Therefore, the Park Foundation would be required to have a twenty percent match. And their project request is $30,000. What else can I say? This is a recommendation. There is nothing that ties these projects permanently, or there's not a financial or sequel request at this point. What will happen is, going forward, whatever the board chooses to approve and move forward or not, then I will be coming back to the board with actual very firm agreements with each of these entities. Being, number one would be the San Andreas Rec and Park Commission, or San Andreas Parks, Rec and Parks District. The railroad flat piece would be with Calaveras Unified School District. And the Feeny Park piece would be with Vallesito Union School District. And those will have very specific timelines, project requests, scopes of work, and budgets. So, this is more of kind of a, an information gathering and an opportunity for our commission to provide these recommendations to the board. Are there any questions?
Any board questions? Ms. Callaway?
I, I have two. On the railroad flat one, the property is being bought by the county. We'll own it in fee title. What part of that three hundred will be for buying the facilities?
The acquisition piece for the property, I believe, was discussed at a seven-eleven meeting, and Cory may be able to speak to this a little bit better. But what was proposed was $100,000, which would be twenty-five percent of the value of the land. So, that would leave $200,000 for doing some roofing and improvements on the gym.
Okay, so just sort of, just generically, any money that is spent, whether it's for railroad, flats, San Andreas, or Feeny, the money has to be spent upfront and then reimbursed by this?
That is correct, Supervisor Callaway. And what I, the item that I will be bringing forward next board meeting will be to actually set up an allocation fund so that I can do the reimbursements quickly, as most of these entities don't have the funding to pay upfront. And it is a reimbursement that I will be seeking from the state of California parks.
Could, could you run that one by me again, if they don't have the money?
Most of these community organizations do not have the funding to pay for the work to be done. And also, the way that this particular grant works is that I will actually, not I personally, but our auditor controller would be working directly with the vendors to pay these vendors, and then I will seek reimbursement from the state of California.
So, you're asking the county to front the money for these three projects, and then the reimbursement comes back to the county?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the one for railroad, where the county will then be owning the land, will this, will we be eligible to be reimbursed for buying the land?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, when San Andreas spends whatever for fencing, the county will pay the vendor? Do you know the timeframe for getting reimbursed?
According to the agreements, it's between thirty-five and forty-five days.
So, the county will be floating the money for that amount of time, correct?
Correct.
If for some reason there are funds left out of the original allocation, will any other part, of course, you know where I'm going with this, be able to apply for these funds?
Yes, ma'am. The other thing that I want to point out is, if for some reason one of these projects does not move forward, those funds too can also be reallocated to another project.
Okay.
And the timeframe on the grant for completion is June thirtieth, 2024. That's when all of the projects need to be completed.
Right. I'm not interested in doing, getting into locking and the like. We did Prop forty. Well, except we don't take ownership, which we did.
Derek?
Yes, we did.
We did on Prop forty?
Yes, we did. CCWD. We are still in Light Pines Park.
Oh, that's right. You're correct. That's, that's right. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, at what point can these projects proceed? Ms. Galino, I'm not clear on that.
I'm sorry. Can you please repeat that?
Yeah. At what point can these projects proceed? Do they have to wait to come back to the board?
Yes, ma'am. So, what will happen is that, provided on what the recommendations the board accepts today, then I will come back with actual agreements and the master agreement between us and the state, the agreements, the sub-agreements with these three, whatever projects. I'm just saying these three, because that's what's before you today. And the detailed scope of work, their budget, and all the project information and those agreements that also have very detailed what their obligations are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway and Ms. Fulendorf.
Are we able, because that was one of my questions. Is there any more detail for each project with a cost analysis? Is it possible for the- Is it possible for the board to see these detailed for the project, for the scope of work, Kathy? Because-
Yes. What I have is very, it's not a detailed labor rate with prevailing wage. What we're floating right now is the concept. We have very rough, not rough, but we have estimates, not detailed project scopes of work. That's what will be coming back to you. We didn't want to spend a bunch of time on a bunch of different projects to not, well, there weren't a lot of projects, number one, that were brought forward, but we need to get more detailed analysis for the board to review when we move forward. This is just strictly bringing the commission's recommendations forward, and then the board can give us, give them, me as the liaison, the direction to pursue further detail.
Has there been any conversations at the Parks and Rec Commission or any other outside of that with staff on how to maximize those dollars? Because Prop 68 has various rounds for maximizing these funds to utilize as matching in the programs. So, and with Railroad Flat being in a disadvantaged area, there should be an opportunity to apply for more funding to cater to the needs that are expected. And how complete, it's one thing to purchase, and I understand that in Prop 68, we can purchase, purchase additional land, but does the project have to be fully completed with the requirements of Prop 68? I mean, has anyone dived into this to understand that all these boxes need to be checked? Because I would be concerned that if we purchased and we're expected to complete the entire project, those boxes aren't checked. So dream versus reality, are we just going for allocation of the land or the whole scope? Because if it's the whole scope, it's going to be more than that $300,000, and are we going to be able to meet that? I'm just concerned about us being able to check these boxes to get that reimbursement back.
Do you want to weigh in on that, Mr. Guerminde, or would you like Ms. Colino to go ahead and go first?
Oh, I'll let Kathy speak, but I'll fill in anything that may need to be thought.
Supervisor Fuldorff, yes, that is a very good concern. It's a very valid concern. The training that I was required to take to apply for the grant, which I haven't even applied for the grant yet. So this, as I said, is an allocation that's provided to Calaveras Incorporated, and the application has not been submitted. I haven't brought any of that to the board yet. But yes, the project completion and finding additional funding is something that the Parks and Rec Commission would also be looking at. There are many other funding sources for Parks and Recreation for maintenance and ongoing repairs. So the project checkbox is pretty prescriptive in the grant application and the reimbursement process. I was not here when Prop 40 was moved forward in the county, but I have heard that there were some difficulties. I think that now with Prop 68, it's a little more user-friendly. The checkboxes are pretty straightforward. I've been working very closely with Linda Willett, who is our State Parks Representative, because of the concerns. And obviously, the county doesn't want to be in a position to have to repay a grant back. I will also tell you that on these agreements that we will be signing, or if they do go forward, that they are a 20-year, or in some cases, a 30-year, land tenure agreement. So there is some level of safety, and there will be accountability.
Mr. Guerminde, is there anything further?
No, I think that summed it up very well. And to your point, Supervisor Fuldorff, yes, it's not enough to do everything, but it's enough to get us going and to a sustainable level where the community can fundraise and operate. And there's never enough money. We could spend endlessly, but this gets us going, and we're going to privilege progress over perfection. This will get the roof on, this will deal with the safety issues, this will acquire the land and allow the community to begin building their programs. So if there was more money, of, yeah, but I think this gets us where we need to go.
Something further, Ms. Fuldorff?
Yes, I have more questions.
But if I could, to expand upon your, what I think you're also talking about is there's a lot of money out there under Prop 68 that we should go for. And we are, as our Chair of the Commission will tell you, and Kathy, Parks and Rec seems to be nobody's specific job, so maybe it's a conversation we should have in the future about providing resources to actually bird dog this stuff.
And not to follow up on what you just said, that would be my next question to you, Kathy, is the amount of work that goes into this, because the last round was March 12th, so that round is come and gone. The next round is November, with another follow-up couple rounds in 2022 before the end date of any completion of 2024. But those rounds aren't just what is allocated, it's other money that are out there for the matching. So do you, if we don't have the resources in the county overall, I mean, should we be backtracking to figure out if there's an availability to find someone, whether that be part-time or consultant, to get us through these rounds if you, if we don't have the expertise internally? Because, I mean, it's one thing to spend the 400 that's been allocated, it's another to dedicate the time to possibly get more of that Prop 68 funding, not just for these projects, but county-wide for other needs. Because all of our parks are wanting, and Recreation are needing, they did not be, they were not able to raise money the last couple of years. So is that something that we should be even considering, or are we deadlocked in just focusing on the 400,000?
That's an excellent, excellent point. And yes, I've been focusing on the 400 because I didn't want to lose that opportunity. There is a lot of other funding out there, and yes, we do need to have some resources. I certainly can't give this all that I've got as a liaison, and, you know, in working with our Parks and Rec Commission, there are other things out there, other communities that could be served by other funding sources. So definitely, we, it would be nice to have more resources, and, I mean, I can work on backtracking that, what the costs are, if we were to even have even a part-time or limited-term person that could really run this, run all the funding streams down, so that we could have more funding opportunities, we could have, you know, more involvement. And yeah, definitely, I mean, there's a lot of funding out there. Unfortunately, I, my time is kind of short, or limited, or stretched, is probably a better way of putting it. And so I just focused on this particular allocation to the county with our commissioners at this point. The commissioners are very, very bright, they're aware of lots of other funding, but we just wanted to bring this forward first.
So two more, one comment and then another question. One comment is with Calaveras County, we are a destination of Recreation. It is an economic driver. So investing in the Parks and Recs, I think, should be a consideration of how we advertise, how we're advertising for tourism. I mean, Murfrees Park, I mean, it made Forbes, one of the top destinations in Calaveras County. So these areas, people are looking, they're changing the way they travel, and so that should be also a consideration of how we're investing. What is going to be the biggest driver for economic tourism? And is it always just a pathway for other aspects of the county that we should be railroad flat? I mean, these are things we should be focusing, not just for enjoyment of the community, but could they be potential destinations? And then, and that's just a comment, Kathy, you don't have to answer. And then the one thing I do have a question about is, is there a, I'm new, so to anyone, is there an overall, like a master plan or a master list of all the Parks and Recs that the county oversees in this? And most likely, there's probably not, which is fine. I just was going to ask so I could understand why the decision was on outside of Railroad Flat, the other ones.
So my understanding, Supervisor Fuldorff, is that there is an implementation measure that has been recommended in our general plan. It was something that would be put together by the Administrative Office, Planning and Public Works, but we have not begun that process yet. I invite Planning Director Peter Mallor to jump in here. I see a hand. Mr. Mallor?
Yes, thank you, Peter Mallor, Planning Director. You know, this is one, there's policies in the general plan about, you know, ensuring that the, that there's funding for parks, it's an important aspect of the community. Where the, as Krista mentioned, there's an implementation measure that directs the county to prepare a master plan. We obviously have a list of where all the parks are, but that doesn't really, you know, move us forward into how do we make sure that these parks are maintained and developed properly. We have a variety of different entities that manage the parks, from the Veterans Districts to specific Parks and Rec Districts to nonprofit organizations. And so it really is, it's important that we do move forward on this in the future. Unfortunately, it's not on the top of the priority list just yet, but it's something that probably needs to be, to be moved up, and, you know, the next time we look at the general plan.
Thank you, Ms. Mallor.
Thank you all. Good set of questions there, Ms. Fuldorff and the rest of the supervisors, and good from, good answers from staff. I want to follow up on that, because, you know, with Prop 68, there are more funds coming down the pike, and there are multiple other areas throughout the county that aren't being addressed here now. You know, District 5, first of all, finding a spot for a park is the first, is the first issue. But, you know, we are underserved in our area for parks, and, you know, is a concern of mine. Also, you know, accepting that we don't have areas, there's the Greater Valley Springs area, which falls into Mr. Toffenelli's District 1, and there's prospective areas in there. And I think in the future, considerations for that would be greatly, would greatly serve three more of our lakes in our, in our county, along with a vast amount of our population. And in the future, I definitely think that, you know, more often than not, it's the last thought when we're investing into our tourism, but it's, you know, the least invested into with, you know, a lot of prospective great destination points for the future in our county. You know, I think Ms. Fisk could agree, and I'm glad she's here, representing District 5, and I appreciate all the good work going into the other areas, you know. It's not lost on me that, you know, with Railroad Flat and all, it's a greatly underserved community, and I greatly support a lot of people there. You know, I grew up with a vast majority of them. With that, I have a question. Has CUSD already put together a committee to be able to release that property, because they have to go through a process? And Ms. Fisk, can you address any of that, or should I have Ms. Colino do it? And I want to give you every opportunity to say what you have to say while you're here. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
You can take your mask off when you talk.
If you want.
If you'd like.
Thank you, because glasses are important, and it's difficult when I can't see through the fog. Thank you for having me here. First, before I start, I just would really like to thank the volunteers who are part of the commission. These are individuals who are giving of their time, that are very educated in these areas, and we have the benefit of having some that are intimately related to the understanding of how to develop grants and how to be able to work some of this money around so that it best benefits Calaveras, the Calaveras communities. With that said, the projects that have been presented were kind of already in progress when our group got together, and so there was an understanding and urgency in being able to provide these forward so that we could get started on something. But concurrently, what we would like to be able to do is start really raising the understanding of the importance of the Parks and Rec Commission, so that we can address the things that are important to Calaveras, like the fact that we are a tourist area, and that this is what is going to be able to draw money into our community. The one point that I do want to bring up on that is that when those tourists come here and we provide them the experience that they get to enjoy, they leave and often do so with their garbage and things that remain. And so it has really increased the cost and the work effort for people to go back behind and keep some of these areas in condition. And so maintenance is going to be a very important part of any of the, anything that we choose to move forward on, so that we can keep everything at the same level of quality that we expect for our community and for those who are going to visit us. For the Calaveras Unified School District, I am also sitting on a committee that's called the 7-11 Committee, where the school district periodically, through times, look at their extra properties that they have available. And with the closing of the railroad school, that this was an option that had come up for them in order to be able to relieve their responsibility for maintenance of the property. This school has been in process of going through the closing for a couple of years, and in that timeframe, again, anytime you leave a building vacant, you are exposing it to a much faster deterioration than if it's being used and occupied. And so in that time, there's been residents that have taken advantage of the opportunity of keeping the place functionable in order to be able to serve the people in that community. So I'm not speaking on behalf of the school district, but as a member of that committee, in our last meeting, we did go ahead and review the appraisal amount that was provided for the property. We agreed that the appraisal was not done under the proper scope of work that the school district had provided, and so they got some comps in order to be able to justify the understanding of what that property is worth in its current condition. And so in its current condition, there are a lot of things on that property that are going to require maintenance and money in order to be able to move it forward. However, with the money with this grant, there are very specific areas that can take advantage of it right away, and then income will start coming back into that location along with the volunteering efforts of that community, that will be able to continue building out and taking care of the rest of the issues. So with that said, it's my understanding that the CUSD was going to be taking to their board of supervisors the release of that property, and that we would be in discussions with them on the purchase.
Thank you, Ms. Fisk. Some good points there. With this initial investment, you know, we have to be cognizant of the maintenance of the property for the future, recurring costs, you know, hopefully will be mitigated by some nonprofits and volunteers within the communities. But with that, we still hold the responsibility for that if things, you know, another COVID happens and they're not able to fund, raise funds throughout that time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy, I got a couple of questions for you. The county will be the administrator of the grant itself, is that correct?
That is correct.
So just a couple of concerns on being reimbursed, that we have somebody that's going to oversee to make sure the funding that's allocated to these three projects is spent correctly, and that the county will be fully reimbursed for all of that money?
That is correct. That would be my role as these projects come through and as the reimbursements occur.
And then the other question I have is, this Prop 68, is there any, is there any administrative costs allowed for these funds?
There is. It would require me to really track my time and develop a time sheet-
It would require me to really track my time and develop a time sheet that is some reimbursable. Not a lot, but a little.
Well, I was thinking more of looking at the November funding round and possibly going into 2022 funding round. A Prop 68 that Amanda, Supervisor Folendorf, had brought up, and if we have preliminary budget coming, if we can get this at least itemized on that budget for discussions, that we can maybe bring somebody on board to write the grants and get reimbursed through administrative costs through the grant itself. Just a thought in order to get forward, move forward and get funding in all of these rounds. Obviously, May is too late, but I'm thinking of what we can do moving forward, especially for a property that it looks like we're going to be purchasing. I'd hate to just go so far on it and then something happens and what if another COVID or something happens and we're in the middle of something. If we can get more funding for that, and there are other districts and other park and rec districts around the county that certainly because of COVID has lost their income on their properties, not being able to run it out or what have you, that it certainly needs money and that's, we have one option that we had spoke about, coming forward a preliminary budget to help rectify some of that, but if we can, we can go forward with something that we're going to get reimbursed through these grants and put somebody in place that can do the grant writing and do the administration of the grants itself would certainly help, I think, going forward.
Absolutely. I completely agree 100%. I think that if we had somebody that could really write these grants, we could get a lot of funding sent to Calveras.
I could be in support of that. I work with Kathy on, I mean, this is the economic development generator right here. Work with her on CS EDD. There's multiple things going on at the same time. She has a lot on her plate as one person. She extends herself as far as she can, and at times, she's, you know, she's cognizant of that, and she's messaged me in the middle of meetings with other institutions, like, please don't throw this on my plate because I don't have enough time. So, you know, you know, we need to provide more time for Kathy, and the help that Ms. Folendorf and Mr. Toffenelli are talking about is definitely something that we should look at as we move forward. Ms. Fisk, did you have something you want to add to that?
Just to talk to Mr. Toffenelli's point, and that is that for most other counties, this is a full-time director position, and we do have volunteers that have very good experience that are on this committee, that are offering either for grant writing or construction management or facility development. And so in that sense, we understand the requirements that the grant has in making sure that each of these projects has a master plan that makes sure that we're not getting too far or too deep into something before realizing that we don't have enough money to be able to finish it. There's also other grants besides the Proposition 68 that we can look at, but in this committee or this commission, everything has been basically reactive, and we haven't been given really the opportunity to expand our knowledge on what this commission really can provide the county. And so in looking at what other commissions do or other counties do, they have even training programs, they have different recreational opportunities for building funding in that department so that it can help take care of itself and help take care of the salary of a full-time person that is in that. And so these are some of the goals and discussions that we're going to be having within the commission once we're able to start the development of our team and how that looks. So we've only had three meetings, really, that have been functionable meetings that have had the amount of people there necessary for us to perform any of our duties. And so I really feel that if we're given the opportunity to be able to even find some of this own funding ourselves, that we will do whatever it takes to make it happen because this, this particular area has not seen the amount of, the amount of dedication that it really is necessary for the Calveras County and the whole purpose of our economic development drivers here, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Fisk. We're, Mr. Gueramendi?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for their thoughtful comments on this whole thing, and I agree with Gary and Amanda. We need to think about Parks and Rec as an economic development tool and get the resources to put fuel in the tank to expand this. Think about regional parks, I mean, when our kids, fortunately, I'm beyond that, but when they go down to a soccer tournament, there'd be 500 families there, and they're staying the night, they're eating at the restaurants. That's good. It's good for bringing families, more families up to our community, which we need, especially those kids of our schools. But I think if we look at this as an economic development tool, I think about the work that Colonel McRevy did a decade ago when you guys were working on Prop 40, and, you know, he tracked all the trails through the national forests, all the way from, you know, Camp Connel over to West, over to Railroad Flat. Those are things that, you know, we could figure out how we could use, and they don't cost us much. And then pursuing regional park ideas, I've always thought, I think you've dragged me to half a dozen fundraisers for that over the years, Ben, so obviously, it's out there. We just need to figure out how to close this deal and get it done. Seems like it's been on everybody's to-do list for a very long time.
Yeah. Agreed, Mr. Gueramendi. You know, there's a lot of prospective, positive community members working towards a lot of different ends, you know. We can't, we can't get them all done at once, but we need to look at the entire plan and possibly, you know, a master plan was brought up by Ms. Folendorf earlier.
And we could, and we could probably find Pat's old work on that. Just before I sign off, I want to thank Cory, who's a construction expert and has offered to come up and pro bono, give us some advice on how we can eat that elephant of Railroad Flat Elementary.
Buy at a time.
How we, exactly, how we take that money and make it as effective as possible, so, and what an awesome volunteer. Thank you, Cory.
Excellent. If there's no further, Ms. Folendorf?
I have one more question. I think it's for Kathy. On number three for Feeny Park, it shows that this is the only one that has grant fund matching at 20%. Will that matching, where's that matching coming from?
The match will come from the Feeny Park Foundation, and it's $6,000.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisk, do you want to add something to that?
Yes, just also, matching doesn't always have to come in a fiscal monetary way, and so sometimes volunteers and the amount of time that they put towards something will also have value that will offer part of that match.
Yeah, we're using that.
That is correct. There's, they can use an in-kind component, but it's very, very prescriptive. So if this project is approved, I will work with the Feeny Park Foundation to ensure that they cross their Ts and dot their Is because the state really, really looks at that stuff very closely.
You can charge three hours of my time I was cleaning Feeny Park two weeks ago.
That's not dotting Is, Ms. Callaway.
Just want to make sure my time was counted.
It's always counted.
Kathy, these are some of the things that I, I guess, to understand this, those are, that information I, in the future, would like to understand more. I mean, if it's not going to be monetary and it's going to be time or other contributions, I think that should be broken down so it's understand that it's not coming out of a budget line item and what those nonprofits or community members are contributing. For me, it just helps me understand so I know, it answers my question, where that money, what does that money really look like and what, is it coming from the county expectation or is it coming from the community through fundraisers, time, consultants, whatever have you?
Absolutely. I totally understand what you're saying, and that is, that is the detail that I will hope to be bringing forward, the level of detail that you would like if these projects are approved to go forward.
Yeah, I think that will be refined as we move forward also. You know, this is the first initial step, saying this is the direction the board would like to go. At that point, you have your marching orders and you'll be refining it from there. Ms. Colino?
Yes, sir.
All right. So if there's no further board questions, I will move on to public comment.
Yes, we have Susan Linus.
Susan.
Good morning, Board. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Susan Linus, and I am the treasurer of the Feeny Park Foundation and the previous president of the Feeny Park Foundation. First of all, I'd like to thank Kathy for the work she's put into this recommendation and the Park and Recreation Committee. The foundation will definitely make use of this $30,000. In 2019, when these funds became available, Feeny Park also applied for this money, but because we are nonprofit, we weren't, we're not a park and recs, we weren't eligible for the funds. So I did spend quite a lot of time looking into this grant and the parameters of what could be done. Feeny Park, as you know, is in Murphy's, but it serves a much greater area. It's used by residents up and down the Highway Four corridor for Little League Soccer, Disc Golf, and it includes the only developed skateboard park in the county. The next closest one is in Oakdale. It is currently entirely community funded. We receive no public funds. Our major fundraisers, which are Mr. Fox's Wild Ride and the Gold Rush Street Fair, were both canceled last year. On both of those events, bring people into our community. We have cyclists from as far as Utah coming to Mr. Fox's Wild Ride. While the park can definitely use this $300,000 that was recommended, which will go to upgrade the one of our public restrooms in the park, there are much greater needs. There are several years of deferred maintenance on everything from the handicapped accessible pathways to upgrading the restrooms with water and power to be more efficient so they can be open year-round for our community. Feeny Park has applied for $100,000 to this program to be used to fund these things, but we were awarded the $30,000, and we will use that. The specific grant program has already awarded $177,000 to each of the following park districts. The San Andreas Parks District received its own allocation of $177,000. The McCollum Hill Veterans District was awarded $177,000, and the City of Angels was awarded $177,000. This is separate from the $400,000 that was awarded to the county. Unfortunately, the remaining $400,000 was intended to be distributed throughout the county to serve the other parks and needs of the community. Unfortunately, there was, very many of the parks districts were unaware of the Park and Recreation Committee's meetings and didn't have an opportunity to make presentations. I know of this because I've worked with Kathy in conversations prior to the meeting. As I said, we'd also applied for this funding. White Pines Park and Valley Springs and as well as other parks and nonprofits were unaware of the meeting and hadn't an opportunity to provide proposals. While the proposal to the Railroad Flat is laudable, there are a lot of grants that are available for park acquisition. This grant is unique and allows it to be used for repairs and maintenance, which is a very rare grant. Many, most grants require you to purchase new land.
Susan?
I'm sorry.
If you, if you could sum it up or pass this?
Okay, quickly. So what I'm saying is I want to let say that I'm asking that the money be allocated more accurately to reflect the park and recreation needs of the whole community, and, but I'm very happy that Feeny Park is being allocated this money, and I assure you, we are shovel-ready. We have the resources and the funds to do our share of the allocation, and you gave us this money and we will be digging in tomorrow for it. I know there's, there may be other questions, and I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you for your time, Susan. Any further public comment?
We have Sarah Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wilson. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the Board of Supervisors and also to the committee for all of your hard work. I'm a board member for the Vallesito Union School District. I've served four years on that board. My most recent was board president for the past two years. I'm also a fifth-generation resident of Calveras County, having been raised in the Vallesito Union School District, going to Michelson then Avery and graduating Bret Hart High School. Also, my husband and I, we have two boys. They attend school at the Michelson Elementary School currently. I would like to take a few moments to say how much the community needs and appreciates Feeny Park. I remember as a child, when it was built, and how wonderful it was to actually have a facility close to home and we didn't have to drive many hours to different facilities. Now, as a mom, I see how beneficial the park is for all of our kids. It is the only facility to accommodate soccer sports and a skate park for kids from Copper to Arnold. All of the schools use the park for various events. Most recently, the Michelson Elementary School is holding their 32nd Annual Chicken in a Barrel fundraiser at Feeny Park this June. Historically, the fundraiser the past 30 years has been at the Murphy's Park, but they're moving it this year to Feeny Park. Also, right before COVID, all of the local elementary schools had a color-run fundraiser to raise money for the school program. They partnered together, which was unique and wonderful, to see the schools that are typically doing their fundraisers separate, come together at Feeny Park to raise money for all of the kids in the community. In addition, with COVID, school fundraisers have been placed on hold. However, the teachers have been creative and they've done field trips through Feeny Park recently. The kindergarteners are actually going to be going on a walk around Feeny Park, enjoying the different plants and trees that the park has to offer. Not a day goes by that I do not see people enjoying Feeny Park, from dog walkers to disc golf enthusiasts to moms taking their kids for walks. The park is truly enjoyed by all age groups. Being raised in Murphy's and now living here as an adult, I have seen how much Murphy's has changed. I've seen the vacant lots turn into tasting rooms, and I've seen Murphy's develop and change over the years. But what you don't see is how hard the nonprofit organizations work and are struggling and have been struggling for years, and now with COVID and shutting down their fundraisers are struggling even more. What I'm asking is that the Board of Supervisors support the grant funding for Feeny Park Foundation and support it fairly across the board. The foundation has suffered tremendously this past year and is in desperate need of funding to keep the park open for all ages and all groups and everyone in the community. Thank you for your time.
Excellently timed, Ms. Wilson. Three minutes on the dot. Thank you. Any further public comment?
Yes, we have Salvador Sanchez Fernandez.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Salvador Sanchez. I am a B and CRC member. I've been for the past three years, basically, for the people, you know, for the Railroad Flat. It warms my heart, you know, hearing all these other people, you know, talk about their parks, and I'm so excited that we're finally going to have a park, you know, basically up here, up in Railroad Flat, Wolfseyville, Franco, West Point area, you know, because we really don't have one, you know? And this is going to be basically the park that's going to take care of these big communities, you know? I moved from, I moved from, I originally lived in San Jose, and we moved over here, you know, six years ago, and I love Calveras County. This is the place, you know, to be. I mean, my kids, you know, love, love it here. My kids, you know, enjoy it here. They play baseball, they do karate, we have soccer. Before coming over here, we didn't even have a soccer team up in the, you know, Railroad Flat, Franco, West Point area, or we had a small one in West Point, but we were able to create it, you know? And then now with this opportunity, you know, to start a park, you know, up here, it's going to be so amazing, especially the way that you guys, the other people are talking about the parks, you know? Up here, really, really a small community, you know, but we're really, you know, proud community, and we are so happy that you guys are thinking about us and, you know, and about to help us, you know, go into this new adventure, you know? And thank you so much to the board, and thank you so much to Mr. Gueramendi, you know, who is our supervisor on this side, and thank you guys for everything you guys do.
Thank you, Salvador. Any further public comment?
Yes, Ed Neiman.
Ed?
Mr. Neiman, can you hear us?
Do you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning to the Board members. Thanks for all your work you do and for giving me the opportunity to work with you. I am the District 4 Commissioner on the Parks and Recreation. And I have to apologize that I'm, I'm a real naive, two, two, two meetings into this, you know, Prop 68 thing and my lack of understanding of it. And I'm gaining more understanding all the time. This has been very beneficial, listening to some of the things that was brought up here. First of all, I'd like to address the Railroad Flat project. Commissioner Thomas and I actually took a trip up there and walked that property. And it is an asset that this county has that it should move on as quickly as possible because, as it was mentioned earlier, empty buildings that aren't used deteriorate rapidly. And, and no matter, it's, it's going to take a lot more than $300,000 or $400,000 to, to make that work. But we need to, as a county and as a Board of Supervisors and Parks and Recreation Commission, need to do everything we can to make sure that happens. With that being said, a couple of questions that has come up to me during, during this, this meeting. And I'd like to address a question to Commissioner Falendorf or Cory or Kathy, whichever one or all of you that want to kind of chime in on this. And I can understand that 68 funds can be used to fund an effort to get more funds, that we could hire somebody and create a path so that we could pull in not just $300,000 for Railroad Flats, but maybe $800,000 and, and, and start working for some other parks and some other recreation opportunities. I, I, that's kind of been dropped on me in the last three days. I may be wrong about that, but I would like to have, if that's possible, I think it's something that we need to address and to think about. I was going to bring this part, we, we were supposed to have a Parks and Recreation meeting on Monday before this meeting, but it got changed to tomorrow, I believe. So that's my question for Commissioner Falendorf, Cory and Kathy, if I could let you have some time.
Kathy, do you want to answer that or do you want me to clarify my question and comment from earlier?
Answer. And it's also something that is going to be on our agenda. We do have our monthly Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. For those that may be listening that want to be a part of that, it's noticed on the county website calendar as well as posted outside the board chambers. And if anybody has questions or needs assistance, they can always call me directly at 209-754-6742. But yes, we are going to be looking at other funding to potentially get somebody on board to help the Parks and Rec Commission. As I said, I'm, I'm a liaison, so I'm just a conduit for the commission to the Board of Supervisors. But in working together, I think all seven of our commissioners are interested in having something that's sustainable and something where we will be acquiring more grants and working together and possibly through, like I said, a temporary person, a part-time person, to get more and more funding to continue maintenance and growth of our parks and recreation.
Any further public comments?
There is no other public comments at this time.
Thank you. I, I, it's really good to hear so many people speak out on this issue. It really hits the heart of every home, I believe, in, in Calaveras County. You know, even going up to Railroad Flat, I, I was in seventh grade when I was traveling up there to practice soccer on the field. So there was no grass on the field for the most part. And I think I had scabbed-up knees that entire soccer season. And I, you know, Don Stumpf at that time was our soccer coach. And we were, when he was, when he was from that neck of the woods. And, you know, I believe we were, we ran a perfect record that year because, I mean, we, we were, we were trained tough, you know. So hopefully we can get some grass on the field. Any further public or board comments? Mr. Gary Mindy.
I'd like to make a motion. Can I make a motion?
You can.
You're so moved.
So moved.
I will gladly second this motion.
Thank you, sir. Any further board comments to this before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Kathy, we got pretty clear direction.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. And we're not going to let you down. We're going to move this forward.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. Fisk. Excellent to see someone out there, out there participating. All right, so. Back up to 17 now. Health and Human Services Agency authorized the Board Chair to sign a letter of intent with Health Plan of San Joaquin, changing the county's managed healthcare model from the regional model to the two-plan model.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and citizens of Calaveras County. On the agenda today is for the Board's consideration to sign a letter of intent to change the county's Medicare model from the regional model for a two-plan model.
Are we going to have to have her call in? We, you know, the same microphone issue that possibly Mr. Leach was dealing with earlier. You know, you could possibly mute your, your screen and then call in on your phone at the same time. That may resolve it. If we're okay with that, Madam Clerk, will that resolve it? And then we could also have her be able to share through her screen at the same time. If, if it works. I've had a juggle a couple of meetings that way in the past.
No, Laura, sorry, we're still not hearing you well.
Can we take a five-minute break while we get this ironed out so we can proceed smoothly? Is that okay? Sorry. Thank you. Welcome back. Can we hear you now?
I can hear you fine.
I can hear you fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, no echoes or anything?
No.
Great.
Oh, there's something in the background. You might want to mute your computer.
It's muted.
Okay.
I'm actually going to just disconnect from the computer and use my phone.
Is that going to work for sharing?
What?
Let's, let's proceed.
Are you there?
Yes. Let's proceed and.
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you all. I apologize for the technical difficulties. I think in the future for me, I will stop by and chat in person when doing presentations with you all. But again, I would like to say good morning and most good afternoon to the Board of Supervisors and to the citizens of Calaveras County. As I was sharing earlier, for consideration today on the agenda is for the Board of Supervisors to consider signing a letter of intent, essentially, changing the county's Medicare plan from the regional model to a two-plan model. In changing to a two-plan model, the county Medicare plan would include a public, would include a public healthcare plan and a commercial healthcare plan. The public healthcare plan would be the Health Plan of San Joaquin. The commercial healthcare plan would not be known until 2024, after the state completes its RFP process and awards the contract. Essentially, the same contract could be awarded to our current provider, which is Anthem or Centene. It all depends on what the state decides. The Health Plan of San Joaquin has been serving San Joaquin County and Santa Fe County for the past 25 years. And today, they serve over 366,000 members. Health Plan of San Joaquin, as with all Medicare plans, are held to the same rigorous standards required to provide healthcare as identified with their legislation and regulations. San Joaquin and Santa Fe County offers its Medicare members two healthcare plan places. They offer Centene and they offer the Health Plan of San Joaquin. Nine out of 10 members choose Health Plan of San Joaquin over Centene. In moving to the two-plan model and working with neighboring counties on a shared vision to govern the Health Plan of San Joaquin, Calaveras County could have a seat at the plan commission, giving the county local control and a voice in addressing the unique needs of our 12,000 Medicare members. Signing a letter of intent today and changing the two-plan model is an opportunity for the county to exert local control and oversight over its Medicare managed care model by providing our Medicare beneficiaries with the additional options to enroll in a public healthcare plan and a commercial healthcare plan. Not that it makes a difference to the decisions that the Board makes today, but I would like to share that Algeota County and Alpine County have signed a letter of intent to partner with the Health Plan of San Joaquin. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we, this is the third time we're discussing this. Mr. Gary Mindy had a vast amount of questions prior. Have you been able to address all those along with Ms. Coway? You also had a vast amount of good questions also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I spent an extraordinary amount of time running the stuff to ground, talking to our different agencies and whatnot. So I have no questions. I'll have a comment when we move to that.
Absolutely, sir. Ms. Coway.
Ms. Larson, I again, I thank you for responding to my many questions. Just to expand a little bit more, under the regional plan, how many choices do our Medicare recipients get to make or have to make?
Yes, ma'am. Under our current plan, they have two commercial healthcare plan options. So it's the same, except for their commercial healthcare plan. Moving, changing our healthcare plan to the two-plan model would give us a public model and a commercial model. And the commercial, or excuse me, the public model would be the local initiative, which is the Health Plan of San Joaquin.
I think that's where I'm, I understand commercial and our current provider.
Yes.
Do we just have one or do we have two?
We have two.
Okay.
We have two. We have Anthem, we have Anthem and we have Centene. The difference being, and I, and I understand it's confusing. It took me a little bit of time to figure this out myself. The difference being is that the Health Plan of San Joaquin is a local health plan. And so it is ran, governed by San Joaquin County and the commission. And so we have more local control over the plan as opposed to the commercial plans, that they're governed by their executive boards and their, their executive management. So the Health Plan of San Joaquin does give us more of a local control over the health plan that serves our community. So it gives our citizens choices, a local healthcare plan or a commercial plan.
What kind of local control do we want that we're not getting now?
Great question. So one of the things that I, if I may review my memo. But one of the most, I think, critical aspect is that we, the Health Plan of San Joaquin is governed by our commission. And so if Calaveras County chooses, we can have a seat at that commission. And should we have needs of our community that we want addressed within the Health Plan of San Joaquin, we can share that with the commission and then they would address it accordingly. So meeting the needs of our community is on a smaller scale and we would have a voice in addressing those needs. I think community investment, Health Plan of San Joaquin offers scholarships for local high school graduates to attend universities. Those regular oversights, as with all Medicare plans.
I guess my question then would be, our local providers, the two that we have, are not meeting the needs per at least health and human service perspective. They're not meeting the needs that we have requested. I mean, one of the things was that, well, we have to travel so far for specialized services. Yeah, you do, or we do, because we're not going to have all of the disciplines out of Mark Twain or at Venice Hospital or Sutter. So we have to go to the more urban areas. So I'm, I guess what I'm trying to get at is just having a seat at the table, that's more, that could be just more bureaucracy because now we're government versus, I can't believe I'm saying this. The libertarian in me might be coming out. The commercial should also be attuned to what it is we need for our community. So I guess it's like San Joaquin dealing with the more urban areas. I, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm not sure I comprehend what the advantage is.
Right. So if I can just comment on that, and I think that's a really great question. And the, the challenge right now is not with our providers, it's with the healthcare plan. And so within each healthcare plan, the plan sets forth, these are the providers that you can go and see to seek your medical care. So the plan actually dictates that. If you think about your own healthcare that you have, within the scope of your healthcare plan, your plan tells you, you can go see these providers, but you can't go see these providers. So the challenge right now that has been with the original models, which is Anthem and Centene, and in accordance with the audit that was conducted by the state of California, is that the providers, the healthcare plans, have not been providing enough providers to meet the needs of the beneficiaries within the compliance of the law. For example, some folks were traveling 150 miles to go see a specialist, like a gynecologist. The law states that beneficiaries are not supposed to be traveling more than 60 miles. And so the challenge with that is that the two, the two healthcare, healthcare plans today, they were aware of that and they, that wasn't addressed. And on two separate occasions, the Department of Healthcare actually gave the regional plan waivers to exempt them from the requirements of the law that says that travel can only be within 60 miles. And so it's just been a challenge. It's not the providers. The providers are serving the people in accordance with, with what oversight governs them. It is the healthcare plan that says, these are the providers that you can go and see. Right now, San Joaquin County is serving Santa Fe County. They will be serving Algeota County and they will be serving Alpine County. Their intent is to contrast with all of the current providers that are currently serving our Medicare beneficiaries because within the scope of the law, it also says that we want to make sure that we maintain consistency in care. So just because we might change our healthcare plan doesn't mean that our beneficiaries would have to change their providers. So San Joaquin County would move forward in contracting with all the current providers, but also looking at additional providers to expand the network. The network by nature is going to expand, giving all the. Their network by nature is going to expand, giving our beneficiaries more options in Caldas County because they are going to be working in Alpine County and they are going to be working in Algebrada County. I'd also like to mention that they currently have contracts in San Joaquin County and in Santa Fe County with all of our current hospitals. They have with Ventus, with Sutter, and so that is not going to be a challenge as well. So our current providers that are currently serving our citizens will maintain, will stay, but the network of choices will be expanded. So to answer your question, I think you might be alluding to why? Why make the change? I think we should make the change because if we don't, in 2024, the state will pick our providers, and we will have no say in who those providers are. Our only option in 2024 will be the state says, here are your two commercial plans, or if there's more, it depends if they qualify, and we get to pick from that list that the state gives us. By signing the letter of intent, we are essentially picking one of our plan options, and then we would have to wait until 2024 for the second plan option.
Oh, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I find some of it unrealistic. I live in Sky High, and it takes me 50 miles just to get to San Andreas. And so if I need a specialist, I'm going to have to still drive another 40 miles. So sort of that part. Will, under the San Joa, health care plan of San Joaquin, can everybody go to whomever they choose to go to, or do they have to be approved by the plan?
So it's a medical health care plan, and so within that plan, they would have to go see the providers that are set forth by the plan. If the plan dictates that you have to have, if you're talking about a referral for a specialist, that's something that would, it depends on the type of plan, I would say. But yes, you do within the confines of your plan, like you have to go see the providers that your health care plan is, says it is within the network.
So it's still, thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you for bringing up the 50-mile rule, Ms. Coway. I mean, it's another example of the state saying a precedent of one size fits all that does not take into account what a rural area has to deal with. Any further board comments, questions, Mr. Toffenelli?
Hi, Ms. Larson. How are you? It's almost lunch, you're right, it's almost afternoon, but still AM. My question is, if we vote to join the health care plan of San Joaquin, do we have the ability to opt out if it's not working for us?
So we have, so, so yes, I have reached out to the state to ask that question. We have until September, when the county ordinance would need to be done, essentially stating formally that the county is changing its health, its Med-Cal model from a regional model to a two-plan model. But I, but if somewhere within now and September, or excuse me, October, something happened and the county was adamant that they are no longer interested in doing this, the state has indicated that, that yes, you could, you could rescind that. And what would happen if we do that? Well, essentially, we would fall back into the regional county model, and then when the state finishes their RFP process, then they would select, we would select two commercial plans.
And after September, until 2024, we are in and have no ability to opt out because we've agreed to that model?
And October, once we change the, correct. And the reason why is, is that the state wants a, they want assurance of what the county's decision is as to what health care plan model they are putting forth for its Med-Cal members so that they know exactly how many commercial plans they need to procure contracts with. However, I will say, I will share this, that going into October, the state is already going to be starting the rigorous vetting process for the health plan of San Joaquin and any other public model plans that are expanding. And they will go through the same rigorous vetting process that the commercial plans do, and that is going to take some time. So by October, the state will have some level of assurance, the qualifications of all of the health care plans that are going to be assessed. But it will take them through past October to know if they're truly going to pass. So if for some reason, next year, the year following, that through the vetting process by the state, if they determine that the health plan of San Joaquin County cannot support this expansion, then the state does have the option to forego the letter of intent, and then it would put it back into the regional model that we currently are in.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
To follow up on what Mr. Toffenelli just questioned, you know, we do a letter of intent. I mean, this is non-binding at the same time, it's basically giving our word. So in my, in my mind, once I give my word, it's binding. But we go through, so October of 2021 is when it's officially binding. You know, the state's asking for in 2024, you know, for us to have this put forward and be meeting the state requirements, which, you know, as I see it, there's no way even with the dual plan, we can fully mitigate the mileage issue. But is San Joaquin asking for a two-year contract, or are they asking for a longer contract?
No, so that's, those are really good questions, and so I'd like to address them separately. So the contract, if we change our Med-Cal model, we can only do that when the state opens it up to counties to allow for that. The opportunity to change a county's Med-Cal model hasn't, the last time I think that happened was 2012. And so I don't know, and the state representative did not know either, when this opportunity will come around again for us to change our Med-Cal model if we wanted to. But if that opportunity does come back around, then we would go through the same process and change our Med-Cal model. With respect to the travel, it is not the county's responsibility to mitigate the travel requirement. It is the health care, the health care plan's responsibility to be looking at where do our members live and seeking out providers that can support the members in their area. And you're right, the uniqueness about Caldas County is that we do, living way up in, you know, up towards the Alpine border, like there's going to be some travel. But with health plan of San Joaquin expanding into Alpine, that might give us more options for providers up in that area, expanding over to Algebrada County, that would give us more options that way. They're looking at contracting with current providers that our members are using. So if we have providers in Tulare or in Amity, then we, then health plan of San Joaquin County would be looking at expanding their network of providers to mitigate some of the travel dilemmas. So the burden for Caldas County is not for us to mitigate the travel, it is on the health plan of San Joaquin to vigorously and actively seek out providers that have a fewer distance for travel so that they can address the travel and make sure that they can stay within the compliance of the law. But obviously, given our locations, there's going to be exceptions to that. But I think in general, when we think about the audit findings, the travel that was happening for some counties, you know, 150 miles, that, it was happening more than just a few times. And so there is a reason why the audit found that as a finding. It wasn't just a few people, it was, it was a lot of people. But that is something that San Joaquin County is aware of. They know that they are expanding their network to support rural counties. I mean, they're, they're serving Alpine County now, so this is a big lift for them, but they absolutely are aware of what is expected of them and how to serve our members.
Yeah, and I understand your point on Alpine County, but they more often than not travel to Salt Lake Tahoe on all their issues.
Correct.
So, I mean, that, creating a larger distance, but, you know, not to be argumentative. How's the VA fill into this? And thank you, Amanda, for the question. How's the VA fill into this, veterans?
Oh, how, well, if they're Med-Cal members, it would, they would, they're, I'm not understanding the question. If they are Med-Cal members, then their health care coverage would, it would be the same as what they're currently receiving.
Yeah, but they also get additional, some of their specialists aren't locally, and so they're having to go down to Palo Alto and other areas, and that's been a big issue too, is just serving the VA, the VAs as well. So how is this, the state model going to incorporate rural health care for the VAs, especially when our numbers are one of the highest in the area? How does that hook into this? And I understand the VA is a separate, but we've got to also acknowledge that's going to be the highest population that's going to be possibly using some of these services.
Yeah, that's a really good question. And so if I, so our members, our community members who are veterans, who are receiving veteran services, their services are being provided through the VA. So they're going to providers who are contracted with the veterans. So if they are also a Med-Cal member, then they are going to be able to still seek sources from their current providers that they're receiving because the health plan of San Joaquin will be contracting with all current providers. So they, the veterans' health care is separate from the Med-Cal health care that we're talking about because the, the burden is on the veterans to provide local providers to serve veterans in rural areas. So that is, that is separate from, I think, what we're talking about. That, that is the department of the veterans who would, and those contracts are not changing. So veterans would still have their same benefits with their doctors who are contracted with the VA. But also to mention, in San Joaquin County, there is a very large veteran hospital and clinic, and I'm sure our veteran members are aware of that and potentially are utilizing that currently.
Thank you. Any further, Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, I do have a question, which kind of dovetails into what Amanda was saying. If we choose to go down this model, and the current model that we have has a list of providers, and if I have a doctor that I've been going to for the last five years and feel comfortable going to, there's no guarantee if we change models here that that doctor's going to be available come when this goes into place, that I would have to be going to a different doctor because that particular one is not in this model. Is that correct?
Um, yes and no. So after, so right now, what, after if we sign the letter of intent, the health plan of San Joaquin has a list of all the current Med-Cal providers that are serving all of our community members. And so once we move forward with the letter of intent, they will move forward with reaching out to all of the current providers to begin the contract process. I will also share with you that in talking with health plan of San Joaquin, they have shared that Caldas County providers have already started reaching out to them to ask about the contract process. So there is, there is no reason to believe that the current Med-Cal providers serving our members would not contract with health plan of San Joaquin because they too are serving Med-Cal beneficiaries. So within, the health plan of San Joaquin, it's a different plan, but they are still operating under the same regulations and legislation that our current health plan members do, Anthem and Centene. They are all operating within, under the same, within guidelines.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing, this is Sam, do you mind if I jump in real quick?
Sure.
I just want to make sure, I think you're all aware, our board members, but just so that, you know, everyone that's listening hears this, that this isn't necessarily a choice entirely of are we changing or are we not changing from what exists now. The status quo is changing either way because frankly, the state is going to, you know, go to the RFP process. So what exists today will look different in 2024 whether we take action or not. The question is whether you want to move to this plan and try to do the health plan of San Joaquin, which, which Laura is advising, or do you want to, you know, move to the new plan under the new state RFP that will be developed moving forward? So I think you're all aware of that, but I just want to make sure because, you know, a lot of questions about, well, what exists today and will that still stay the same? And there's going to be some, I just want to remember there's going to be some level of uncertainty either way because I think that's an important element as you all with us and try to make your decision. And with that, you know, I'm going to stay out of it, I'm not trying to advise, I just wanted to make sure that that was heard.
Thank you for sharing that, Sam, and I think that is, that really does hit home. Regardless of the decision that we make today in 2024, our health care provider, our plan will be different in 2024.
Thank you. Any further board questions, or shall I go to a public comment?
We have Brianna Lerman.
Good morning. Brianna Lerman here on behalf of California Health and Wellness. We are the current Med-Cal plan serving your county, about 50% of the lives. I think I've spoken on this issue the last two meetings. Just a point of clarification, so Laura has referred to Centene, Centene is the parent company of California Health and Wellness, so you'll hear Centene, California Health and Wellness, and HealthMet, this all one of the things for the sake of conversation and I don't want anyone to get confused. So we've been in the county for the last seven years as well as the surrounding counties, and of course, hope to continue our service to you through this upcoming procurement. I just want to speak to this topic before you. It's really complicated and it's really confusing. I want to make sure, you know, for the board's sake, Mr. Chair and members, that we emphasize with a real question mark our commitment to remaining in the county through upcoming procurement, of course, hope we're protected. But I want to address a number of the issues that have come up in the course of the conversation. So the first one being, just a point of clarification, the department has put a title on this as model change, but really, you have two plans now and you have two plans in the future. The question before you is whether through this LOI, you want to get really a preliminary contract award outside of the bidding process to a public plan, so a government plan based in San Joaquin, so health plan of San Joaquin. We would, in that scenario, have two plans at the end of the day, just like we do today, it's just a little bit of, it's a different type of health plan you'd be exclusively partnering with. And then we would hope to bid for one of the remaining contracts, so just to make sure that's clear. So a couple of things, the neighboring counties around you are really important because your county as a service area and all the surrounding, it really operates as a region because of access issues and because of natural care patterns. So a couple of things have come up along these lines that I want to clarify, which is we, we have contracts almost throughout the whole state of California. I think that's a distinguishing benefit. And I'm listening carefully in this conversation, you know, in current state, future state, what the benefits will be and what this change will bring for you, and access has to be front and center. And because health plan of San Joaquin has not really done its due diligence yet and showing its network capacity, financial capacity, administrative capacity, I've according to you that we know, care patterns from Sacramento, care patterns from Santa Fe, Stockton, we cover all of those. I don't know if health plan of San Joaquin does. Time and distance standards are standards set in statute, that's correct, but I have to say there's also a pretty lengthy process for getting alternate access standards, which are really common in rural areas. So you're looking at the improvements this will bring, I don't know the access will be one just because of, by virtue of just lack of providers in the county, and certainly I think the number of providers in Alpine would be zero. So there certainly aren't any there that we would look to. So access is something I want to call out. And the other benefit that's come up has been governance. I just want to flag that governance and feedback groups and say in investments are something that's available to us at California Health and Wellness. It's not necessary to enter the model change to get that outcome, and that's something that we flagged in conversation. that we flagged in conversation. So, I just, you know, this is a really complicated issue. The preliminary contract award carries some risks, because I think there's questions on feasibility for a plan to come in and build networks on, on the service area that started to look a bit like a checkerboard with counties that are proceeding and not. But regardless, we're happy to serve your county, we're pleased to continue doing it, and in fact, we did follow through the conversation last time, the school lunches, the summer lunches in the library for kids, so we're excited to be partnering with that, and of course, excited to continue serving you. So, so thank you for listening to me, and I think this conversation should continue. If you approve the LOI, it would be helpful for continuing to come before the board, because there's a lot of details around it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Thank, thank you for your comment, it was enlightening. Any further public comments?
Could I just comment on Brianna's comment?
Yes.
So, I, I've heard this come up a couple of times throughout our presentations regarding preemptively offering a contract with Health Plan of San Joaquin, and the question about the, the financial feasibility of them going forward. And I just want to share that I submitted to the board a packet, and the Health Plan of San Joaquin, just like all of the other health plans, are going to have to go through an RFP process, but public models are submitting the LOI, and the LOI even, it's misleading, it sounds like a letter of intent, but the LOI is a very rigorous package that contains all of the information about the financial sustainability of the plan, as well as their network and their oversight, and all of that was submitted to the board for your review. And, and this is not something that had to be put together for us, but it, they provided it, and so we, you all have had an opportunity to see what's going to be sent to the state in, in that bidding process. So, I just want to mention that we do know what their financial stability is and their oversight and what their provider network looks like.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No, there's no further public comment.
Thank you. Any board statements? Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you very much, Chair Stoppa. As I said, I went, I spent a lot of time researching this, and I, and I came up with a lot of questions, and some of them were answered, and some of them were impossible to be answered at this point of the game. When it came, so I had to try to figure out what I, how I wanted to sort of make my pitch here, and I'm going to come down to just one very simple point. If we jump in bed with Health Plan of San Joaquin, we are going from having two companies, we're from going to have two private companies compete, or compete to get the RFP to serve our community, to one that we're getting into bed right now, and as soon as October is done, if we haven't cut the deal, that's what it's going to be, and then we'll have everybody else competing for the one spot. My, my thought and my concern is, if the Health Plan of San Joaquin is the better mousetrap, and let's assume they're a very good mousetrap, then they should compete with the private sector for our business to support our consumers. So people, if, if, if Health Plan of San Joaquin, the public plan, is the better plan, they could compete with the private sector and show us that they're the better plan. Don't tell us, trust us, we're going to figure this out, it'll work in Calaveras, because I saw their original plan, which was a regional approach. Now Tuolumne's gone, and Amador's gone, so I, and, and Eldorado is not connected. So I'm not sure how that all works out, but my bottom line philosophy is, if the government has a better plan, and this is a government program, then they could compete with the private sector and show us that they're, you know, that they're a better program for our consumers, because our people are the ones we have to worry about the most and the services they got. And I would like to see Health Plan of San Joaquin compete for it. So therefore, Mr. Chair, I will not be supporting this letter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garamendi. It reminds me of, you know, it's not medical, but, you know, being in bed with Delta College on the west side of the county, you know? Lots of promises were made after the, after everything was signed and done and voted on, here we are with nothing in our hand. So, you know, I very much hear what you're saying, and I, I agree with the competition. You know, that's part of any healthy capitalist system.
Could I just comment on that?
I'm going to let, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say that I think if the state of California, the Department of Healthcare services, would have allowed the Health Plan of San Joaquin to be part of the RFP in the bidding, they would. Unfortunately, they're following the guidelines that the state has put forth for them, so there's, there's no other option for them. They're just following what, what the state has told them to do.
Thank you. Ms. Coway, did you have something?
Yeah, I understand what Supervisor Garamendi's saying. The problem is, is that they can't compete, or if they could, based on what Ms. Larson just said, until it goes out for bid statewide. So when they open it up to others, and it's like, if we don't pick this, then we go to the regional models we have, then they would have to wait until 20, we would have to wait till 2024 to see what companies, commercial and/or otherwise, Health Plan of San Joaquin would bid, but if I heard what Ms. Larson said, they wouldn't be allowed to anyway. So, do I understand that correctly, Ms. Larson?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm, upfront, I want to say, I too had many questions, and I want to publicly thank Ms. Larson for her yeoman's work on consistently answering very detailed questions that I had on a subject that I found very difficult to understand. And so, I just publicly, Ms. Larson, want to thank you for all you've done. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, it's been a great learning opportunity.
I hope to shout.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. Any other board comments? Mr. Topnelli?
Yeah, I, I've had many concerns too on this item, and I'm kind of where Supervisor Garamendi is, and one of my other concerns are, changing now, I, I haven't heard any, very, 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 very little from the public on this item, and, and nobody's really contacted to reach out saying that, hey, I like the provider I have, I don't want to change, or I like the doctor I have, at least for now, at least till 2024, when the RFP goes out. I, I just don't see throwing that out right now, because I know myself, I've had the same doctor for 30 years, and I'm very comfortable going to that doctor. He has all of my records and, and everything there, and, and there's a lot of people that feel that same way. They go to a particular doctor because they feel comfortable and they're within their plan. And, and so they develop a relationship with, with just not only a regular MD, but, but even a specialist that they're going to, to a specialist. And just to, to change that mid-span, I know it's going to be a big shock, because a lot of people probably don't even understand what we're talking about right here. But they try to go to their doctor and find out, they get a notice in the, in the mail that their doctor's no longer part of that plan, that they have to go to a different doctor, or choose one of these other doctors that are within the plan, I, I think would be a big shock, especially to the elder generation that we have here that are on these plans. So therefore, at this time, I, I can't support it.
I just ask a question, they're not going to be dropped this week in 2024, and it can happen anyway.
Correct, in 2024, yeah, but there's no contracts with the same providers that we have with the two that we have now through San Joaquin.
But in 2024, they're gone.
I, I understand that, at least till 2024, and they may still be in that plan, if those providers opt into whatever, then they could still go forward, but right now, there's no guarantee that the same providers that we have with the two plans that we have now are with San Joaquin. And I, I just think that's going to be a shock to a lot of people, to find out we're going down this path on this plan, and there are providers that they're used to going to.
But it'll be a shock either way.
Well, at least we have till 2024, that's a two years down the arc.
We have till 2024.
And then that'll be the state's issue, and they'll have to pay attention to what's in the news on the state, because that RFP going out through the state, we'll be channel 13, 3, 10, it'll all be all over what's going on.
I guess I'd say that I sort of was somewhat leaning that way, but either way, we're staying with what we have until 2024. We're just saying, in 2024, I do not want the state of California picking one of my plans. And then, so, I've sort of come full circle. My concern was more with the Health Plan of San Joaquin, and I just think it's in the best interest of the Med-Cal recipients of this county for us to sign a letter of intent with the Health Plan of San Joaquin. When I look, as Supervisor Garamendi did, at the details that you talked about, I mean, I can, Ms. Larson can just forward to you what she sent to me, and I think it's in our, because our regional model's gone. And are we, we are safe till 2024, the, it's gone, then we get, if I, we get whatever comes out from the state. And I would like to think that since we are going to be on the board, whatever, however the board's formulated for the healthcare of San Joaquin, then it will be in our best interest to make sure that the issues of the Med-Cal provide, the Med-Cal recipients are met. And if I heard Ms. Larson talk, she said they have already started going out to the providers of the current, of our Med-Cal recipients, and bringing them on board as providers. That's what she just told us. So, I do support signing the letter of intent. I think it's a much more known commodity than hanging out in, in whatever land we hang out in till 2024. And so, those are my comments.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
We, if we put forward a letter of intent now, and we sign on to this in October, we start the plan starting 2022, correct? Going into 2022?
No, 2024.
Okay, so there's nothing going forward until 2024, with signing up in October?
Correct. And the reason that we're doing this so early is there is so much that has to happen going forward. The state has to look at the letter of intent, they have to look at the Health Plan of San Joaquin, they have to assess them, they have to go through the bidding process, and then the state has to do their other RFP work, and so nothing is changing until 2024.
Understood, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Topnelli?
Yeah, just comments on what Marita was saying, I completely understand that, but as what was said also before, if, if we don't join it and we go down the path with the state, the state has requirements, their own requirements, that the providers have to be within 50 miles. And all of the providers that are now providing to our constituents may not join the San Joaquin plan. They may not be happy with what's going on with them, but at least going down the state's plan in the future, I don't think they'll be eliminated from that plan, because they have to have those providers within their own confines of what they set forward, which could mean, if you join the San Joaquin and those providers opt out of that for, for whatever reasons, because they're happy with what the state sets up, then we could be sending constituents into San Joaquin or into Eldorado, because they're, they're providers now that could be in the state plan in the future, are no longer in San Joaquin's plan or, or aren't in San Joaquin's plan, so they can't go there. But the state is going to set up, through their own parameters, what doctors are going to be available for the plans, and, and they have those guidelines, which was told to us on several occasions, and one of the reasons was 150 mile trips. Well, that's going to be part of what the state sets up. I, I just think that there's a possibility that all of the providers that we have now for our constituents aren't going to be part of that plan.
We've beaten this one for quite a while. Do we have any motions or more comments?
I move that we sign a letter of intent with the Health Plan of San Joaquin.
Is there a second? Dies for a lack of a second?
Because I think what we've done is we've now left it up, and the responsibility is going to wind up falling on us as a county.
Do we have a motion?
You did.
All right. So at this point, we're with, we're dying for a lack of a second, and no, no other amended emotion, motion, not emotion, motion, that we're, as I see it, we'll be staying with our current plan as of this time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Ms. Larson, I appreciate all the work and, and background you put into this. I know it's been a, I, I know you put, you know, your, your heart and soul into all this work, trying to move this forward, and that's not lost on us by any means.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. I think we're at a time where we can break for lunch. It's 11:53, let's go until 1:30? Or 1:00.
I'd better go with 1:00.
1:00.
I would give it 1:00 or 1:30, but I can think, I might not even.
Okay. 1 o'clock it is.